I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:03 PM on November 21st, 2022. Would you please join me in your pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the which is stands one nation, and every tribe, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the First Selectman's Report. I want to thank the Advisory Committee on Sustainability. I'm pleased to announce that Darien was awarded the Silver Level Certification, the highest level that's currently offered from Sustainable CT. Highlights from the application that we submitted included efforts to enhance pollinator pathways through invasive species education and management, and the installation and management of native trees and gardens, participation in a regional study to measure and track the ecological health of Darien's bays and harbors, the Chamber of Commerce's Live Darien CT app, the Police Commission's Slow Down in Town Initiative, and the EPA Energy Star Certification for Demonstrated Superior Energy Performance in four municipal buildings. So those were just a few of the items that were in this, on this application. They had 13 different categories, and it was a very, it was a very robust application, let's put it that way. So Silver requirement is 400 points, and Darien earned 535 points. Yeah. So I was honored to join the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Commission, Carolyn Bain, the Project Coordinator, Kathy Finnegan, and Committee Chair, or Committee Member Christine LeJuni in West Hartford last, last week for the award ceremony. There's additional information, there's the actual application on the website if you want to see it. It's actually really, really interesting, so. Beth Paris and her staff did a terrific job of creating a lovely Thanksgiving Day, Thanksgiving event at the Mathers Center on Wednesday, November 16th, and it was terrific to see all of the seniors there in person. It was the first time in a couple of years that they were there in person, and they, you know, had a great time being with their friends. So it was terrific, and I want to give a thank you to all of the town employees that helped with serving and handing out the meals and cleanup. It was very, very nice of them. So the Chamber of Commerce awards for 2022 were distributed last week at Nielsen's, also on Thursday. The Employees of the Year were Susan Gay of the Sports Shop and Sean Kornacki of the Gardener Center. Business of the Year was the Darien Toy Box. New Business of the Year was Check Mind and Body, Check Body and Mind, sorry. And in addition, there were four adults and two youths that were recognized for their outstanding volunteer service in town. So the adult volunteers, the awards went to John Bresen, Hilda Quah, Marie Hernandez, and Martha Peretta. And the youth volunteers were Evelyn T. A. and Julie, Juliet Erdlin. So I want to thank especially the volunteers that stepped forward. Another outstanding volunteer was recognized last week by the Darien Land Trust for all of his over 30 years' worth of work supporting the Darien Nature Center, Selux Woods, Dunlop Woods, and the Darien Community Center. Chris Filmer is just a wonderful gentleman and a volunteer who's worked tirelessly for our community, promoting our natural environment. So in keeping with the theme of volunteerism, the Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee is seeking a new member, a construction member, and if you have HVAC, if you have that type of experience, that would be really helpful. If you're interested in volunteering, please contact the Selectman's Office. The Darien Post Office at 30 Corbin is officially closed. So the downtown post office has temporarily located over in New Rothen Heights underneath Palmer's, and the hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00, and Saturdays, 9:30 to 12:30. And again, this information's on our website, and those hours could change when the holiday season kicks in. On November 19th, I attended a Survivors of Suicide Loss Day, which was organized by the Mental Health Task Force, and I'm sure Marcy will want to speak to that, but just want to really give another thank you to everybody that's working on this task force and to Ellie Ramstock, who's, who's our Human Services Person that's running. And it's, it's, it's really terrific to see these events being held and our residents taking advantage of them and finding some, some companionship and some peace and some hope at these events. So I thought that was terrific. Today, actually, this evening, the town received the executive agreement with Eversource. So it was, it's between Eversource, ConDOT, and Metro North for the work that was performed on the town right away on Little Brook. And so now that we have the, the executed agreement, we will be posting the agreement and the, the planting plan on the website, and I want to give a thank you again to our former First Selectman Jamie Stevenson, our Director of Public Works at Gentow, and our Town Council, Wayne Fox, for their diligence and their hard work on this, on this project. I attended the Council of Small Towns Cost Conference last Thursday in Plansville. Thursday was a busy day. This was an excellent opportunity to meet other members of this group. It's 100, we have 169 municipalities in Connecticut and 116 are in this, in this particular group. And it was a terrific time to meet other members and to discuss a number of items, including new planning and zoning laws, water and wastewater challenges, and what ideas other communities are considering to help revitalize their downtowns and their main streets. The Turkey Bowl, Thursday, okay, between Darien and New Canaan, at the high school. The football game, annual rivalry, is a longstanding tradition, and may the best team win. That would be Darien. A more recent friendly rivalry of the most generous town between Darien and New Canaan is taking place right now. Each town competes to raise the most funds for either the Community Fund of Darien or the New Canaan Community Foundation. Collectively, the towns raised $500,000 in 2022 to support local nonprofits, and New Canaan took home the Turkey Trophy. So if you would like to make a donation, please visit the Community Fund of Darien website for information. Competition closes at 11:59 PM on Thanksgiving Day. So this is our year, Darien, let's, let's get this done, okay? It was close last year, but not, you know, we're going to do it. So finally, in recognition of Thanksgiving, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude for my fellow selectmen, our town employees, and all of the volunteers serving on our boards and commissions, and thank you to all of the residents that support our local businesses throughout the, throughout the year and particularly throughout the holiday season. That is my report. Kate, Town Administrator?
No report tonight, no report.
Okay. Board Liaison Reports?
We had a Light Review Board meeting on November 9th. We currently have nine properties that we are tracking that are in various stages of fines accruing and liens being, you know, taken, but the most significant aspect of our meeting last week was that the property on Hollow Tree adjacent to the construction project appears to be in line to be demolished. The, the owners, or purported owners, it's a group of relatives who have some statistical share of the property. While they've had trouble getting together to sell it and clear title, it appears they have gotten together and arranged to have it demolished. So we will expect to see that in, over the course of the next month, which is a positive development, and we thank them for that because it'll obviously be safer and less of a attractive or unattractive nuisance once it is plowed over. And that was it.
Have they pulled permits?
They, they had gone to P&amp;Z, and it appears that, you know, they have the green lights to go, so we expect that. And they have a contractor lined up, so, and they're working with the town on that, so.
So do you have any indication on timing?
I think within the next, I think within the next 30 days. It seemed as though, when we had our meeting and asked for a timeline, they seemed very close to being able to get the full approval so that work could go forward. And as I said, the contractor, whose name I don't have here, but they have it lined up, so I'm hopeful.
So were they at the light meeting?
They were. They came and reported. They have come from time to time to, you know, express their difficulties in clearing titles so then they could absolutely sell it, and the, the board's position has been, we appreciate the efforts, but you have to do something. And they're, and they're, they were motivated to do it because their fines were accruing, which would then be collected at whatever point they sold that house, so. But I feel like they have made good faith efforts, you know, throughout, and I feel like they will get this done.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
So for the Thriving Youth Task Force, the Darien Youth Community Conversation was yesterday, 31 students from, who were all Darien residents, some, most of which go to Darien High School and some went to a couple of the other schools in the area, attended, and the students left, and some of the words that they used to describe the event were inclusive, collaborative, proactive, and safe. It was a positive report, and they're going to be getting together and kind of debrief the folks who ran it, and it was facilitated by Deborah Hertz. And the next step is to understand how the students want to proceed, by presentations or meetings and so forth, but all in all, apparently, it was a very good event, so. And there were not parents in the room, which was great, so it was just youth leaders and Deborah, so the kids were very happy.
Were you in the room?
No, no, no parents.
No parents.
Which is good. And then the Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee met last week. Also last week, the RTM approved the additional appropriations for the schools for the work on the school roof projects, and they're now determining the stormwater, stormwater management systems for homes in Hinley in particular. The members of the committee will also be at the next planning and zoning meeting at November 29th, and as they move through the next round of approvals, the Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee are grateful to all of the boards and the RTM for assisting us as we're able to get our appropriation increases approved in order to meet the state deadline of December 1st. And we'd like to thank everyone who has been so helpful to us as we move towards Thanksgiving, so.
So the IT Committee met last Thursday, the 17th, and we finalized four IT policies that we're actually going to review tonight, so I won't go into those, but I think they will certainly add to our policy infrastructure with regard to IT, which is something we've needed to improve. Other topics that we talked about were mainly on the Citizens Services Committee, and that subcommittee is designed to try to simply improve the citizen experience, and it's in their interactions with town government. And so we've identified a few priority areas. One of them is just picking 1, 2, 3, 4 services maybe that are not currently offered online that could be, and to try and get some quick wins in that regard. Another one would be to establish a, what we're calling kind of a citizen CRM, Customer Resource Management, where you have kind of a single way or a single point of access to where if you need some kind of town service, where you need to buy something or pay something, that there's a, an easy and obvious place to go to, to do that. A third area is to try and look at our payment processes and vendors to see if there's a way to consolidate that, again, to get more of a seamless and expected experience when you log into town government to try and make payments. And then finally, going through and providing input to the folks who are redesigning our town website, again, with an eye towards improving or making sure that the customer experience is something that's first and foremost in, in terms of how the redesign would be, would be set up. So I feel pretty good about that. We're going to try to keep that focus limited so that we don't come up with a lot of ideas that don't get implemented, it's just a few things where people can actually look and say, hey, that made a difference. So more to come on that. And then finally, one of our other committees has developed a survey. The survey is going to be sent, if it hasn't already been sent.
It's been sent.
It's been sent. This survey is really nothing more than a vehicle to gather input from town employees, elected officials, I think that's it, but kind of the municipal world here, with a central question, which is, what could we do better? And I've attached a letter to the survey announcement saying, look, if you could take more than just a couple of minutes to go through this and really spend some time filling out the text boxes and tell us what you like and don't like. Did we finally make this anonymous? Is that what was decided?
Oh, always was anonymous, yeah.
Okay, that's right. So one thing to emphasize is that the survey is anonymous, so that means that whatever advice you put down, Kate is not going to come after you. She thought about it, but we discouraged her from doing that. But the main thing is to just get honest feedback of what you changed. So anybody who's received that survey, I certainly would encourage you to take the time to fill it out, let us know what you think, and we will take those ideas seriously and try to boil down a few recommendations that will make a difference. So that's it.
Okay, wow, busy.
I was going to, sure. So two reports. One is on Mental Health Task Force. As Monica mentioned earlier, we had our first Survivor's Day, which was held on Saturday. We're incredibly grateful for New Rothen Presbyterian for offering their space. It was an absolutely gorgeous space, lots of lighting. We opened up that invitation to any attendees in the Fairfield County area, which, the reason we did that is because the purpose of Survivor Day is to interconnect people that have had significant losses so that they can use each other as a resource to get through the process of healing. And we had about 20 attendees. It was actually the first time I have ever attended an event as a survivor, and it was, you know, just a day filled of hope, sharing stories. People were in all different stages of their losses, some three months, some all the way up to 20 years. So it was a great community sort of activity that, that was engaging people that have had these, these very tragic losses in their lives to connect. Our intention is to continue to do that every year. There are two that happened in the state of Connecticut. This year, one happened more on the East Coast area, so it was nice to be able to bring this service to the West Coast, you know, towards the western side of the state. Coming up is a mental health QPR training course, which, if you have not taken that yet, I highly recommend it. They will be doing it by Zoom. There was a date set, however, it was overlapping with another event that Mental Health Task Force is going to be doing at the schools, so I know that we're rescheduling that. But QPR training is quick, rapid response, and what that is, is that you could be able to identify somebody who's in a crisis situation very quickly so that you can help respond to make sure that you can get them the services and the help that they need. Going forward, we have a huge lineup of things that we're looking into for training and for engagement come past the first of the years. So certainly keep peeking into our Human Services login on our website, and you'll get up-to-date information on, on programs that will be coming throughout the, the remainder of the calendar. Oxbridge Building Committee, we met last week Wednesday, still very busy over there, lots of activity, lots of construction. You know, they're doing a wonderful job. I reported the last time that there was a little bit of a hangup because as they were digging the foundation for the accessory dwellings, they did come across some old tanks and needed to remove that, which certainly, there was a cost associated with that, and there was a little bit of a delay in the process, so we got a report back, and fortunately enough, there was not a tremendous amount of, of cost, and the delay was really minimum. Right now, we've gone into our contingency about a little bit under $500,000. We had a contingency of 1.5 million, so we still have about $1 million left, which is great, which means the project is still on budget at this point. Estimated that its completion should be at the end of May, so knock on wood, that supply chain still happens, May 2023, we should have Oxbridge Building complete, so. That's the latest. Questions?
Nice. You're welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and would anyone like to give public comment?
I'm just regarding the flag.
You can give public comment at anything. Just, we need your name and your address, please.
Kelly Stewart, 24 Pointa Woods Road. Thank you to the Selectmen for bringing to light the issues regarding the flags to be flown over Darien Town Hall and Darien Public Properties. I'm in favor that the American flag should be the singular flag above Town Hall with the Connecticut State Flag as a secondary. Town properties, including beaches, marinas, parks, libraries, schools, should hang the flag of the United States of America, as this is in fact the flag that represents each one of us and our constitutional freedom. As a community, we certainly embrace all law-abiding initiatives and people. There are many constituencies, and if we try to address each, each one with a unique flag, the result would undoubtedly be the exclusion of a singular group or people. Everyone is welcome here. The flag of the United States of America is the flag. That includes each one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Hi. Dan Guller, 10 Walmsley Road. This is a statement from the Committee for Darien. Much has happened since the first discussion of the proposed town flag policy last August. A local political candidate made a transphobic remark in their run for federal office. Connecticut elected its first openly gay straight state treasurer, and the owners of Norwalk's Troop 429, our nearest LGBTQ club, were brutally attacked in front of their establishment defiling what is supposed to be a safe space for the queer community. We sometimes take these spaces for granted. For every good story about an out-proud queer trailblazer, it takes one incident like that or the shooting in Colorado Springs to cause a queer youth to question whether they are truly supported by their community. This is why we hosted Darien Pride in June. This is why we fly the pride flag. This is why we requested that flag be flown by our town the past two years. Darien Pride would like to thank Town Attorney Wayne Fox for his care and attention in putting together the information for tonight's discussion of Darien's flag policy. We agree with Wayne's assessment that the South Windsor policy would make a good framework upon which to hang our own policy. While the requirements for a supermajority plus one in order to approve a request seems burdensome for our five-member Board of Selectmen, the rest of the policy seems to balance the protection of government speech with the ability of the public to request local town support in the form of flying an organizational flag. Any request can be viewed through the lens of our community values statement as to whether it promotes equity, fairness, inclusivity, and dignity for all. We ask that you not be swayed by those who would use this issue as a weapon in some sort of culture war. Our goal at Darien Pride is for the queer youth of Darien to feel loved and accepted by their hometown just as they are. Being a supporter, being an ally, is not always easy, but it's coming through when it's difficult that will make the most significant difference. There is tremendous power in government speech as well as government silence. Any proposal to ban the pride flag from town property, whether intentional or simply collateral, could have devastating consequences here in Darien. A study released this year from the Trevor Project found that the suicide attempt rate by LGBTQ youth in communities viewed as very unaccepting of them was 21%. In very accepting communities, the number drops to 8%. Which community do we want to be in? Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is to discuss budget guidance for the fiscal year 24 budget preparation, and Kate's going to lead off on this?
Well, this is simply an opportunity for you to voice any things you want departments to consider, and if you want to have a sense of a meeting to give a direction of percentage increases, information on hiring, you know, anything you want to say to department heads to consider as they continue working on their budgets.
I don't have anything specific other than to just be incredibly thoughtful and think ahead. Don't be afraid to ask for what you think you need, that our town needs, because things can be adjusted from any point in the process, but a good idea should always be brought forward, whether we can consider funding for a particular item today or next year, just to get it on the radar, and, you know, we need to hear from the department heads, not just the wonderful things that they're doing, but the things that are of concern to them and the things that they need for the future. So I hope that they will have those kinds of thoughts in mind as they go through their process, and I look forward to seeing their work product.
I have five little things I was thinking about. One is I would love to see any anticipated great island expenses. I know we've got an April date that we're looking at, but, you know, whatever we think we'll be facing, at least in the first year, I would expect to see, obviously, in the budget, as much as possible fleshed out. Two, in relation to Mike's comments, I'd love this budget to be grounded, but also having an eye towards new programs for residents. Three, I'd like to see if we can, with your work, digitize as many services as possible for our residents, make it easier for residents to access Town Hall even on the days that it's closed. Four, as Eversource increases its rates and doubles their rates as of January, I'd like to see if we can increase some funds for Ellie Ramstock, the energy costs fund. I don't know how many residents that we support, but if there's a way to find out and see if there's some additional money that we can put in the budget. I have no idea how long that rate hike will last, and I don't know how many residents are affected, but I want to make sure that we can help them if we can. And then in line with the mental health work, I think it's important, I would like to look at, I know the Silver Hill opportunity was not the right one maybe for Darien, but I would like to see us pursue some additional options. I do think that the residents that used the mental health professionals that were on site when this town was struggling a few times, people found that very helpful. I'm not sure in what capacity or how to do that moving forward, but if we can still keep an eye on mental health services, I think that would be great in the budget. Thank you.
I would, just to add, as I've talked about in the past, that a big driver of municipal budget growth is just adding people. They're really expensive in the long term, as well they should be, and folks need to be fairly compensated for what they do. And so I think any department that's going to propose new personnel because there's a felt need to add staff, given the workload, I'd encourage you to take a step back and ask how the work can either be eliminated, right, test to see if it's really necessary, or made simpler in some way, where you need fewer people to do that work, and that can be done by adjusting the kind of work that's been done to make it consume less time, or frankly, kind of to Susan's point to talk about, or Sarah's point, to talk about the use of technology to actually make that run a little bit more efficiently. So propose hiring and new personnel very judiciously. Second, I would agree with Sarah, we need to have an eye out towards new policies and new programs, things that we might actually consider on the Board of Finance. My job was always to say no to those things, but as I've been reminded, it's actually okay to say yes to some of that. So really, if you have a new idea that would make our government more responsive to the citizens and makes it a better place to live, you shouldn't be afraid to propose that, just be prepared to defend it. Third is, as much as we'd welcome the chance to consider something new, we'd really welcome the chance to throw out old stuff that's not needed anymore. So if there are things that we have done in the past that we just don't need to do anymore, do not be afraid to suggest that. It's really okay to stop doing things and say that this is something that people have either stopped using or we don't need anymore. It's okay to propose that. Just some examples of that in the past has been, for example, how we have procured fire protection equipment, fire trucks, all of that. We had an old setway that had been done through the establishment of a reserve, and just the way we managed that process ultimately was economically inefficient, and you know what, they changed it. That's a great thing. Let's do that 10 more times, stuff like that. And then I guess those are the only comments that I would make, but I appreciate everybody who's involved in the budget process, having done that for a long time. I know it takes a ton of work and all the department heads have put work into that, it's very much appreciated.
You guys did great. Like, they got it all, I think. One of my main focuses was really digitizing and being able to- One of my main focuses was really digitizing and being able to streamline as many things as we can to avoid having to have a tremendous amount of new hires, because as John had mentioned, hires are expensive and they're limited. It's very hard to find help right now. That was one of my main focuses, and then certainly streamlining processes. As we, as residents personally and a community, we know that inflation is on the rise and things are costing so much more, so I think we need to be aware of that going forward to try to really streamline our processes.
Great ideas. All right, and we can continue to collect them, right Kate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to amend the blight ordinance to include commercial properties. And over the last few years, the town has received complaints from various, on various commercial properties. So I've asked Wayne Fox to look into adding commercial to our blight ordinance, and he's here tonight to share his findings.
I think for starters, the RTM did a particularly good job in adopting the ordinance that we now have. Michael probably more aware of that than I am, but the best info that I've had has worked reasonably well. Unlike some communities, it has done well with the people that have the problem. We haven't just used it as a fundraiser, we use it to try to correct the situation that exists, different from what I've seen other towns do. Now we are considering thinking about the possibility of extending it to commercial properties. I think from my perspective, in terms of advising you, I would say to you that I believe, although there is not a lot of law on the issue, there is law that says it can be done and you can include commercial properties. In particular, that was a case known as Parcello, which the owners moved to of a car dealership, which would join the town of Enfield in enforcing anti-blight regulations against activities of their business. And the court, their lower court decision indicated that that was doable, it was possible for the court to do that, for the town to do it rather, and they did. In our case, if in fact you decide you wish to do it, then in my opinion, you should go back to the Board, to the RTM for their consideration and for their drafting, but you certainly can take that position and advise them that you wish them to do so, I'm sure they will.
Okay.
That's really a policy decision for you folks to make.
All right.
Yeah, I reported to this group the feeling on the blight review board that they felt it was a necessary and proper tool to have, and I think, and at that time Wayne had also come to talk with us about some of the legalities, and I think the idea is that as a local municipality within the overall statute and rights that we have of acts we can take, this is within it. It's just that we haven't necessarily done that, taken that kind of action, but it's kind of within the penumbra, I think was the word you used, of municipal rights.
I wish, I wish that I could present to you additional case law in which that was sustained. I've checked, I checked it again today, to see if there was any additional case law that dealt with it. I have not been able to find any. But to answer your question, yes, I believe that you can do it, and I believe it is within the statute and 7-478 for you to do it if you wish to do so.
Do we know of any other communities that have a blight ordinance that include commercial?
I'm not personally aware of others that do. I suspect that there are.
I can tell you that Stanford is broad enough to deal with that. Norwalks is also. There are about five or six others within the state of Connecticut that have done that.
Does the ordinance mirror what we have for residential blight, or is the policy broader?
As I understand, and Mike, you might know this better than I do, but as I understand it, it would use the same wording that we have in the ordinance now and expand it to include not only housing issues, but also commercial properties.
Okay.
And as a practical matter in the application of the blight statute for the residential properties, the Board has taken very much the view of working with the residents, and I think that would carry over into any kind of commercial blight statute. I know back when the RTM created the residential statute, that was of primary concern to them. I'm sure that would be expressed in their debates should it get there. The idea is, as Wayne mentioned, isn't to find a, you know, revenue generator. It's a way to solve these problems when they arise, and what you don't want to have as a community is, all of a sudden, for there to be a significant problem with a commercial property, and then say, well, you know, we don't have a mechanism to address it, come back in six months. So, and as I said at the start, that was really the feeling at the Board, to give us a tool as an opportunity to, you know, work with these people, these entities and these properties, should the need arise.
As you all know, many of the folks that run into this problem are elderly, or their income is not good enough to deal with the property that they have. That's why it's very important for us to take that approach, a fairness, and attempting to work with them before we come down with a hammer to oppose a fine on them.
Well, my general view is that we probably need to include commercial property. Like property taxes, property ownership just entails a lot of responsibilities, and it doesn't matter whether you're a residential owner or a commercial business owner. There are certain community standards that have to be met in terms of the appearance of the property, the upkeep of the property, safety on the premises, all that stuff. And if a property owner falls on hard times, kind of to the point just discussed, as a municipality, we owe it to those folks to work with them to come to a resolution. But ultimately, improperly maintained properties that consistently and over the long term do not meet community standards need to be dealt with, and that's just kind of an unfortunate reality. It's an area where, as a municipality, we owe it to our residents to maintain those standards. And the idea that somehow these would not apply to commercial properties doesn't seem to make sense on the face of it.
I would expect, I'm sorry.
No, doesn't seem to make sense on the face of it, so I think kind of a consistent and fair and equitable application of that policy makes sense to me. Obviously, the Palmer's property in Rhode Heights is the elephant in the room that we're talking about. It's the one that's currently most visible. You know, I know that those folks have had trouble moving forward with that project, but ultimately, the presentability of that property needs to be handled in a way that's consistent with community standards. There really just can't be any dispute about that. The timing of when that gets enforced, the collaboration with those parties to make it happen, that all can be discussed, but ultimately, it can't stand. And so I think the application of this policy to all property owners is the fair and right thing to do.
I would expect that one of the things the RTM would do in its usual thorough way of addressing things would be to make a determination as to whether or not within our community there was a need for that, or are we satisfied, are they satisfied with just having it applied to housing? I'm sure they would take a hard look at that issue.
Right.
Agreed.
I think it's important to emphasize that the statute at this juncture hasn't been created, is not yet in effect, and there's no judgment as to whether any property, commercial property, be it the Palmer's or otherwise, would be subject to a valid complaint. But what this would do would be to set up a system where that property or any other commercial property can be adjudicated as our homeowners are at this time.
Agreed. Well, we have had other commercial entities, you know, we've received complaints about other commercial entities, so this isn't, you know, singular for any one group out there. I would hope that, you know, this is a tough one for me, but I guess I would hope that if the, if this does go forward, that the RTM shows the same amount of consideration that they have shown for individuals, for homeowners, as they will for commercial. And, you know, we never know what's going on in somebody's life and why things are the way they are, so. I know there was a lot of great thought put into that policy, and it took a long time to develop, and I'm confident that the committees that will work on this, should we vote on it, will have that same level of consideration and compassion, so. Any other thoughts on this? Okay, does anyone have a motion to?
You might want to. Request that the RTM consider amending the ordinance.
Okay. Yes.
I'll move.
Okay. Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Okay, all right. Unanimous. Thanks Kate. Okay, next item on the agenda, thanks Wayne, is to discuss and take action to approve recommended software procurement policy. And we have both John and Kate here to explain this. I don't know who's going first. John's going first.
Okay, so I think we can go through these fairly quickly. We've talked about them a few times, and you all have had a chance to read through the materials that were sent around. These policies are all pretty straightforward in terms of, I think, the benefits that they bring and kind of self-explanatory. The first one on software procurement basically just says, look, if we're going to buy software, we need to make sure that somebody centrally takes a look at it before a decision's made to do that, right? So it's to ensure that it's compatible with our systems, that it's the best available technology, that the pricing of the software is handled properly, and that it's integrated with everything else that we're doing. In other words, you don't want people to go rogue when they go out and procure software. It applies to software that's above a certain threshold. I think it was $2,500 a year in terms of annual maintenance expenses or licensing expense, and so it's not meant to apply to everything, but anything that is bigger than that really needs to be handled centrally. And so that's the main gist of that policy, but I think it's thoughtful and effective and something we certainly can revisit as technology changes, but having a centralized procurement policy for software makes good sense to me. Any questions on that?
I think it's a great policy. I was just curious how the baseline of $2,500 was arrived at. Is that like a, sort of a median purchase, or is there something behind how that number was chosen?
No magic, just not, not some of your simpler stuff. Trying to, you know, get to like, something like the Zoom licenses wouldn't rise to that level. So trying to attack just the bigger things. I think it's definitely a dollar limit that would have to be revised on a periodic basis as we get into some of the software, you know, we have licenses that cost thousands of dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing I thought of on that was not just a cost limit, but some other sort of less quantifiable impact that that software could have, right? So for example, it's not consistent or compatible with some systems that we have currently, and that I think needs to be approached on a more bespoke basis, but the only thing we could think of that would seem to apply to everything was a licensing cost, so. Other questions?
I just have one. On this, on this, on the other policies, you have periodically, at least annually. This one you didn't include at least annually. Is there a reason?
At least annually for?
For software.
To review the policy?
To review, yeah. Document to be re-
Or the fees.
No, the document, to be reviewed periodically. And the other, I'll say, at least annually, is that just?
Because I wrote this one and Jeff Adams did the others.
Okay, so we're going to add at least annually?
That's fine.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's all I had on that one. Any other questions?
Okay, any other questions on software policy? Or?
Okay. Now I got them separate, so. May I have a motion to approve the recommended software procurement policy? Mercy. Mike seconds. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Super. Okay. Next is to discuss and take action to approve recommended information technology acceptable use policy.
Okay, so acceptable use is, well, it's just what it says, acceptable use. And so this applies to anyone who has been assigned town-owned IT property, whether it's laptops, desktops, phones, iPads, whatever that is, and attempts to set out the rules that will govern the use of that equipment, and what you can and cannot do with it. It also applies to care and use of that equipment, so making sure that you have a password and that you lock your home screen when you're walking away. I've been involved in a few breaches of IT equipment, not the town, but just in some other dealings that I've had, where folks have left their computer on and information's been compromised, and it's actually a very good sort of rule to enforce with all of that. But the idea is not just with the use of equipment, but it's also what you can do with it in terms of things like internet searches and sites that you go to, those sorts of things. It applies to kind of what you download and share. It applies to personal use of the equipment. We do permit the use or the checking of personal email, but it's discouraged to the extent that it interferes with work. But we're also explicit that you're not supposed to download or take town or municipal information or store that in any way on separate sites, Dropbox, that sort of thing. So I think if you read through it, it's got more details, but this was, I think, a much-needed policy. One feature of this policy that's, I think, different from the others is that all, anyone who's been assigned municipal or town-owned IT equipment is going to be required to both read, acknowledge, and sign this policy, so that we can be sure, can be certain that everybody understands what their personal responsibility is with regard to this. One thing I will point out is that it specifically points out that the town has the ability to monitor and enforce this policy. So if you're on town equipment, you have no right to use that without the town monitoring what you're doing. So that's, I think, also an important provision, not just to protect the equipment itself, but also to protect the town's reputation. We need to have a policy that people sign up for, but we need to also monitor it and enforce it. Anyone have any questions?
No. I do. So, and the, we have town of government, or, I'm sorry, town of Darien equipment must not be used to store personal data such as wedding photos, et cetera. Are you, why are you laughing?
Because I'm sure it happens.
Are we going to give people notice that there's like a grace period to take that stuff down?
Personal stuff off? I think that's, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I think putting out the policy and having folks acknowledge it with a sort of enforcement date of X, I haven't thought about exactly how much time would be needed to do all that. In the old days, that might be pretty hard, but if you've got access to alternate storage like hard disks, Dropbox, Amazon, whatever, there's all kinds of web services that you can subscribe to and pull stuff off a computer that's not supposed to be there. So I suspect it won't take long to get in compliance with this policy, but I don't think we need to enforce it instantly either.
I mean, the policy seems rather complete. Was this reviewed by town council at all, or did you use any other, like, policies as a guideline, or?
That's a good question. We did not have it reviewed by town council, not to my knowledge at least, but I know this is based on not just what other municipalities have done, but frankly, the business experience of a lot of folks on that committee who've written policies like this in the past to protect the interests of their employers, and so it's got a lot of the features there in terms of password usage, protection of the equipment, what you can and cannot do with it, the fact that it can be monitored, and then use of it for personal matters. It all seems pretty adequately covered, and so that's where most of it came from. Other questions?
Yes.
Please.
If an individual uses the internet to buy goods or services, the town will not accept liability for a default payment. Where are you going on that?
So, I think it's supposed to pertain to personal purchases, right? So if there's an issue, and I've gone out and bought something for my own account, but I've used town equipment to go out and purchase it, the town doesn't have liability. I didn't think that was a big issue, but we've included it in the policy. Where there got to be some, go ahead.
It was, one that was discussed.
Yeah, we did discuss that.
By the, by the committee.
Yeah, there was the other issue that kind of confused all that, which was, well, what if some- There was the other issue that kind of confused all that, which was, well, what if somebody's gone out and purchased something on behalf of the town, or they're acting on the town?
That's why I was trying to figure which one it was.
And so this really is meant to the personal use of all this. If you've gone out and purchased something and you were asked to do so by your boss or the department head, you're clearly covered there. And so I think it's really intent, and the facts will come out in the case in terms of what was going on. But if it was clearly for something that was personal, this policy's meant to cover the town in that regard.
Yeah, it's meant for personal things. So if I were to go out and buy, you know, TV set online and use my personal credit card because it's for me, and something happens to my personal information, the town is not responsible.
Right.
That's how I interpreted that.
Right. I thought that's what it was. And then you have, so this, you know, the whole working with individuals using it, you know, their devices for personal. So you have use of personal email no more than for a few minutes to respond to an urgent. Yeah. How, yeah.
So.
That's just good, you know.
How do we explain that?
Well, they shouldn't be spending a lot of time on the town's computer on personal email, especially now that we all have cell phones that have everything on it. But realistically, during a workday, employees should not be spending more than a de minimis amount of time on personal email. That's, they're here to work. So it's just good personnel policy.
Yeah. I started looking at that, just from a collective experience of a lot of people I know, including myself. You know, the day interferes, right? And you've got stuff that happens that's outside of your work responsibilities, and you need to check that. Like, I'm bored to select my email in the middle of the day. It just happens, right? At the same time, I think having language in there that says, look, to the extent that you're there, working for your employer who's paying you, you should not be fooling around with personal email. And so this, I think, provides a benchmark that people could look at and hopefully try to adopt and minimize that type of distraction in the performance and municipal duties that were paying them for it. So I came around to the idea that this was not an overly constraining ask.
And this gives us a tool, because as John said, employees will need to acknowledge, and actually other people assign town devices, but they'll need to acknowledge that they've been given this and that they are responsible for knowing what's in it. So if we do have a situation that arises where somebody has violated this, they can't say, you never told me I couldn't access my town email, you know, on the town's computer.
That's right. It also gives us a vehicle to go in and question excessive use, right?
Well, at the end of the day, if someone is having excessive use of personal email, they're not going to be productive. Somewhere, it's going to be quantified, and that's an HR issue, which you can back up with, well, and you violated, you're outside the scope of this policy, but the bottom line is, not getting your work done.
Yes.
Don't really care if you're looking at emails or just staring off in a space, this is going to be a drag.
You're not getting your work done, yeah.
Yeah. The reality is, any kind of significant action against employee, at least in my experience, invariably is an accumulation of things. It's not like one thing unless it's a clearly egregious, you know, racist comments or unfair treatment or hurting someone, that type of thing. Most of the time, it's a whole series of things that exhibit or demonstrate a pattern of behavior that's inconsistent with continued employment, and this would be one of the things that could add to a case like that. Other questions?
I guess my question is, how many, or do employees mostly have laptops or sometimes that they take home, or mostly everybody leaves their devices?
The majority of the devices are desktops. We do have some employees who are assigned laptops that may go home or to a meeting. They also have iPads or other tablets that they may use in the field, like the inspectors. And so there's a variety.
Yeah. I only ask that question because someone, it's kind of difficult to say during work hours, if somebody is also taking that laptop home and working outside of work hours and checking their personal email, you know, 10 o'clock at night while still doing work. So, but if that's not the majority, then I'm comfortable with that wording.
Other questions?
Just, I have one last. Kate, on the, the last page, I think it's just a typo. So appeals or inquiries may be, maybe you want submitted?
We're, pop her down.
Second paragraph.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, may I have a motion? Any other questions, comments, thoughts? No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the recommended information technology acceptable use policy? Mike moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Okay. Terrific. Unanimous. Next item is to discuss and take action to approve the recommended information technology security incident management policy.
So this is all about what if something bad happens? Okay? Bad is attacked from somebody on the outside. Someone's password got compromised. Some equipment got lost or stolen. Someone's ID badge was lost, right? There's missing storage media. Any one of these things that could happen where confidential information is compromised, we've lost information, say, to a third-party packer or something like that, or something happens that potentially damages the town's reputation. So the first part of this policy just goes through and describes stuff like that and what those types of security incidents might be. I thought the most interesting, and I think all that's kind of useful and talks about what those things might be, ultimately, over time, the nature of these threats could change or get worse than what's written in this policy. What I liked about it was a later section in there that provided some guidance on, okay, so if that bad thing happens, what do we do? And what's the process for making sure that the right people find out about it? How do you escalate it? And what the right process is for something pretty serious? And I'll just read a couple of things from that. It's got six phases outlined, so one is preparation and getting ready to assemble everything that we need to know to find out exactly what happened. The investigation process itself for going through an effort to understand what's happened, how it happened, what the scope of damage is. How do we contain it, right? A lot of, one of the terrible things about IT incidents is that you can discover it, and it could actually still be going on for a while before you can stop it. Third is then, or fourth is eradication, which is how do you get rid of it or resolve the problem? And the last two are really recovery, and how do you get back to the way things were? And then sort of after action or post-action, which is what have we learned from that and how do we communicate it more broadly? So I think this is a good policy for identifying potential threats. I think it's a great policy for saying, if something bad has happened, how do we identify it, escalate it, and address it? Questions?
No questions. But this policy along with the other one, is there a way that we can make sure that everyone who has access to town, you know, software, hardware, understands these new policies? Okay.
I think it's a great policy. I was just wondering, on item nine, where it says document management, this document is valid as of XX 2020, would it be whenever we vote for this now with 2022?
Yeah, it should have been 22, but that, we would make it an effective day upon adoption by this board, so.
And when it says legislative requirements defined by law where appropriate, does that mean in terms of talking about document retention, or are there document management policies that come from the legislature at this point?
Great, great point. That addresses things like privacy, right? To the extent that those rules change, we want to make sure that there was a provision in there to ensure that we are responsive to and follow those rules, to the extent they're not defined in this policy.
And then going forward, would your committee be the entity that would perform, you know, annual reviews, or, you've done so much work on this, I hate, you're doing it every year.
Yeah. So that's a good point, and it's related to something that we've talked about. This committee was not meant to be evergreen and last forever. And so one of the things that we want to do is to try to create a permanent way, and the discussion was really around ideas about things we could continue to do differently because technology's evolving so quickly. But one thing like this, which is, how do you take this particular piece and make it evergreen? I actually would put it with the Human Resources Department to make sure that they are on top of just these last little pieces to remind people like Kate or this board, look, this policy's come up, we need to review it. The main person that I think should be the person in charge of this is the Director of IT. These are all IT-related policies. And so I'd put primary responsibility for having a calendar to manage all of this stuff and bring it to our attention when we need it to take another look. I think Jeff and his department should have primary responsibility for that. Kate, others, we can help, but single-point accountability makes most sense in my judgment. Other questions?
So do you think the annual review should be presented to the Board of Selectmen?
My thing I thought would be if there are changes needed.
I would think security incidents also, if there is a problem, I think.
Well, if there's a problem, I, you know, you should know about that. But the policy itself.
Right.
I think we should only bring it to the Board of Selectmen if there's an update that needs to be made.
Yeah. I would agree. Other questions?
Your response, your response layout is terrific.
Yeah, I like that. Smarter people than me write this stuff, so I take no credit other than entertainment. Good. What else?
Okay. Any other questions for John?
On that one, though.
No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the recommended information technology security incident management policy? Marcy moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Okay. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next is the discuss and take action to approve recommended information technology vulnerability assessment and management policy.
Yeah. So vulnerability is all about, trying to ask the question, how easy is it for the bad guys to create problems or to hack our system or to cause other damage? And so the purpose of this, like in any corporate environment, is to establish some kind of mechanism to regularly assess that weakness or that vulnerability. And so it could range from doing random tests, what we always call pen tests or penetration tests, just to see, get some third-party help and just see how vulnerable that system is. But it's also around saying that even if somebody has penetrated the system, how resilient are we at resisting all of that? And how good are our systems at actually detecting something like that? And so this is a short policy, but I think it's really meant to serve as a platform for our IT staff and others to take this and make sure it's a regular part of what we do in terms of assessing weaknesses or areas in our systems that might be susceptible to third-party intrusions and to make recommendations if they see something. And so this is one area where I would say absolutely an annual review is good, and what I would do is not have so much an annual review of this policy. It's pretty simple. I would actually have, like to have an annual presentation from the IT staff that comes in and says, here are some things that we're doing, here are the third parties we're working with, and here's the, here are the efforts we're undergoing, undertaking to make sure that we minimize system vulnerability.
Given the fact that some towns have been hacked in a way that they've been held hostage, I think this is incredibly important and that we need to pay attention to.
I agree. Questions? Comments?
Unanimous. Great job. Marcy? Okay. If there are no further questions, may I have a motion to approve the recommended information technology vulnerability management policy? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Just one quick shout-out to Jeff Kraus, who's part of our committee, has done an absolutely fantastic job. The guy's a workhorse. He helps pull all this together, keeps everybody on track, and I just wanted to thank him personally for his efforts. He's terrific in many, many ways.
Yeah. I'd like to thank the whole committee and you cheering it, really.
Well, it's a team effort.
But great product. This is terrific for the town, so thank you.
More to come.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a proposed flag policy. I want to begin by thanking all of our engaged citizens for sharing their thoughts and their comments regarding the creation of a flag policy for Darien. I think it's important to clarify that the policy under consideration would only apply to Town Hall and Town Beaches for Darien. So I know some people have reached out and think that this is a policy for flags on their personal property, and that is not the case. Residents will be able to express their support for their individual causes on their own private property, of course. So as a refresher, this discussion began when I was approached on March 4th to fly the Ukrainian flag, and it became even more important after the Supreme Court ruling on Shurtlef versus Boston. So our town council attorney, Fox, is here tonight to give us some additional background on the legal side. Thank you. Wayne.
Good evening again. First Selectman is correct. This issue came to the fore when the Supreme Court decided that Shurtlef versus Boston case. When you cut through all the legalese, what in my opinion the Supreme Court was saying was that you, Boston, cannot spend the last 20 years not paying a lot of attention to the flags that you put up or didn't put up, put up anything that anyone walked in the door with. So you can't do that as a matter of fact and then take the position that we want it looked upon as government, speaking of government language or government advertisement. They made a determination, in their opinion, there was a violation of the First Amendment or our free speech, and they did not support their position that they could limit that particular flag at that particular time. I think based upon the good and valuable input that has been received and discussion that's been held, I think you folks have a policy decision to make. And in my opinion, there are two decisions that you can make. Number one, you could take the position that we're going to raise no other flags. That's going to be our position. We've raised the American flag, the Connecticut flag, the Darien flag, but that's it. We don't go through the process of reviewing each item that comes to us through a process, making a determination, taking the vote on that particular flag, good or bad. I have cited for you and given you examples of what is being done in South Windsor, what is being done in Bloomfield, what is being done in San Jose. I think of those that I have read and looked upon, I thought the South Windsor one was the best because it was written the best, because it was technically correct, because it outlined in some detail the process that one would follow if one wanted to go down that road. The downside with that, I suppose, would be that there would be multiple requests, I would expect, multiple requests made to your board. They were reviewing by your board, any decision being made by your board on what flag was raised in each incident. There could be many of them. It could take a significant amount of your time. Maybe that's not important. But in addition to that, there would be decisions that would have to be made, there would be fights, quite frankly, is why aren't you putting up my flag as opposed to their flag? I would expect that there would be, as there was in the Boston case, some potential litigation that would result from that. The other option that you would have would be, I cited in Berlin and Southington, those cities had a policy that they would put up none, no flags other than a limited number, such as the town flag and the state flag. That, in my opinion, is a decision you need to make. Which do you want to do if either of those you wish to have as a policy? I think they clearly laid out the distinctions from them, and the policy decision would be yours to make.
Wayne, you mentioned in the memo you sent to us, you talked a little bit about the establishment clause and the equal protection clause. Can you, can you explain those a little bit to us?
The establishment clause is fairly simple. Is the government taking a position to propose or support a particular religion? We, as a government, the United States government, wish to stay away from that. The equal protection clause means simply that you are, usually relates to a particular class of individuals, you're giving certain protections or rights to one class as opposed to another, so you're not being fair to the citizens in general.
Wayne, in your review of this litigation, has there ever been an equal protection argument? I mean, I can see like establishment clause, because if you're putting up the religious flag of one group or what Boston did, because all of a sudden they decided, oh my gosh, they're putting up a religious flag, we can't have that. I understand that. But the equal protection clause wouldn't be applicable to a flag being raised, because you're not, you're not affecting the property rights of an individual who doesn't get his or her flag raised. Didn't the Supreme Court also say in Shurtlef that, hey, you know what? It's government speech, and if you don't like the government speech, your remedy isn't the court. Your remedy is to find other people in government to sit in those seats and make those decisions. Isn't that what Shurtlef said?
Certainly, that case talked about and dealt with government speech and whether that constituted government speech, and they made the determination that it did not. There has not been much in the way of litigation since that decision. I expect there will be other cases brought to that court eventually. I would, I would expect. I would expect the Equal Protection Argument could be made. I'm not saying it would be successful. It is more likely to be a question of, is my flag that I wanted on anti-abortion a religious issue? Is that one that we should look upon in that way? Is that proposing support of a particular religion or of a particular view? That is, I expect, would be the type of litigation you would see when someone came to any government institution such as yours. Can I have this flag raised? For some reason, you folks decided against it. There's the potential for challenges there, and I would expect that there would be multiple theories proposed.
I'd love to ask if we have the ability with history, how many requests for flags have been formally requested of the Office of the First Selectmen?
Well, since this, we've had, we've received the following requests for consideration. As I said, we, this kind of was started with the Ukrainian flag. Considerations for the St. Patrick's Day, for Pride Month, for Italian Heritage, Asian American for Donate Life, National Hispanic Heritage Month, National Coast Guard Day, Adopt a Senior Pet, Military POW, Native American Month, Pro-Life, and the Knights of Malta. So these are all, you know, people that have come forward and said, why, you know, why aren't you, you know, can you do this? I actually had somebody that, this is a little different, but somebody that wanted us to send them their, our flag to, actually to France. But, you know, we've had, this has been kind of an interesting topic, so we've had people reach out for a variety of them, and this is it. So we've had a lot of people reach out in support of the pride flag. We've had a lot of people reach out in support of holding the three flags, so.
I think Wayne's citation of the South Windsor policy is interesting and I think has a lot of merit. The only adjustment I would make to that is that rather than having a supermajority, I would propose that the majority must include the first selectmen. Because as the leader of this government, a leader of this town and this building where the flag would fly, I would be uncomfortable if the first selectmen didn't approve it. But other than that, I mean, obviously, there's wordsmithing that can be done. I like the policy, and I understand that it could be administratively burdensome, and there might be litigation. But you know what? If we were afraid of litigation in this town, there wouldn't be lights at the high school. There wouldn't be those redone fields at the high school. There even wouldn't be that cafeteria in the stands, because all of that was threat of, you know, litigation. I think that we stand on solid legal ground, and I think as government, we should take advantage of having government speech when we can have it. If we want to fly the Ukrainian flag, or the pride flag, or the POW flag, or if the King of England comes here on a trade mission to fly the British flag, all these things would not occur if we let this just die here. And if people are upset, I'm Irish, if I'm upset that we don't fly the St. Patrick's flag, if there is such a thing, then, you know what? It's my province to, you know, vote for people who would. But at its elemental point, I just feel that it's, frankly, it's just weak. It's just weak to pass the buck and have a total ban. It eliminates a conversation forever on any single flag that you think want to fly. You don't think the pride flag is proper? Have that conversation. If others get opposed, have that conversation. Make a decision. As opposed to, this just has punt writ all over it, and I don't think we've punted our end.
So it's interesting, because I think, obviously, the language of the Bloomfield and the South Windsor are very similar with the things that they say, you know, we don't, you know, fly flags that are religious content, you know, and so forth. I think they're very similar content, and I think there's a clear basis to be used from. I do feel that this board is incredibly intelligent, and we have the ability to make these decisions, and if someone was to want to fly a flag, they could apply to the Board of Selectmen in 60 days' notice, 30 days' notice, whatever process we put in place. And we have the ability to have that conversation. I, it's going to have to take somebody who's going to be willing to come in front of the Board of Selectmen and ask for that flag and to defend their request and have other folks support it also. This is not something that, you know, willy-nilly, we've gotten some emails that certainly have said, well, fine, if you're going to fly a pride flag, then you should fly whatever flag. And that's not the way that this town runs. We do it through a process, and I have no doubt that we could easily run something like a South Windsor or Bloomfield with following these confines. I think saying that we wouldn't fly the POW or the MAI flag or the pride flag, you know, I look at this town, and it's the flavor of our town, and it's the things that we support, and, you know, it's, talk about local control, I think we can handle it.
Just one point, as a matter of policy, I want to be sure you understand, I'm not supporting one policy.
No, no. No, no. You just showed us the South Windsor, Bloomfield. That's it.
Yeah, I guess I'm in favor of a three-flag-only policy for a few reasons. One of them is, I think, the legal concerns that were brought up are not zero. They're kind of far down on my list. I mean, I think we could find ourselves facing some of those kinds of challenges. If we were trying to manage a policy where we're adjudicating which flags are flown, I can envision, for example, conflicting events, right? So there's Juneteenth and Pride, they're both in June, right? So how do we decide which flags fly at what times? Does one flag replace the other for a while? Do we have to put up multiple flag poles to accommodate all that? So I don't think it's trivial to say that, you know, there's no chance of conflict. There's certainly a chance of conflict, and we could be on the receiving end as a town on that. But more importantly, I think, it's clear from Monica's presentation, just look at the amount of time that's gone in to this particular topic, right? When I think about all the other municipal issues that we face, from issues with crime to all the infrastructure problems that we've got, to dealing with flooding, all of that, these are big and weighty issues in this municipality. I think the issue of flying flags and then putting in a process where we're regularly considering flag applications and thinking about, well, was this particular flag appropriate or not? Or what if these people protest this flag and want this other flag? And I just think about the amount of time that would be spent pondering all of that and trying to get to a fair solution. It's a lot. I mean, just look at the list of flag requests that have only come in in the last six or seven months since this whole process started, and these are not, these were serious requests. These people were not, didn't seem to be unserious in their asks at all. But the other thing, and for me, that we haven't talked about, that's, I think, the most important thing, is that if I think about a town trying to demonstrate its acceptance and its inclusivity, there is no better demonstration of that than actual citizens flying flags in front of their residences. Think about Pride Month. How many of the pride flags did you see around town? They were in front of businesses. They were in front of people's homes. I saw them in cars. I saw them on bumper stickers. They were everywhere. And if I had to think about the one thing that demonstrates that this town is vastly more accepting and inclusive than it ever has been in its history, it was the demonstration that I saw during Pride Month and what, in some places, was a sea of pride flags. It was so much so that the idea that I would look to a town property and say, well, where's the town flag actually flying all that, did not even enter my mind. I was looking at the images in front of me as I would drive down the Post Road or drive up Mansfield and actually see all of this displayed. And so I think as a municipality, we're going to be in a much stronger position to go out and support the communities and the individuals and the residences of businesses that are celebrating particular events, not just Pride Month, but anything else that that business or that resident deems important enough to put out a flag and to get others to follow, right? So if something comes up and there's a need for us to, or a need for a particular group to maybe get the POW flags out, or to support St. Patrick's Day, or an Italian-American community, or Pride Month, I think the best thing that we can do as a board and as a municipality is to support those groups, go speak at their events, as Monica did during Pride Month this past June. Put these own, put these flags in front of our own homes. I think that's going to be a lot more powerful in terms of demonstrating our municipality's support for any group in town than us spending time trying to decide what flags to put up on a flagpole. With all due respect, thinking about what goes on a single flagpole in front of Town Hall or a flagpole at the beach versus what I just described, frankly, seems trivial and almost insulting, right? It is much better for us to support town residents who take these causes seriously and to show our pride, support, and unity with them. And we do that by getting out in the community and being part of what they're celebrating, part of what they're promoting, not running a flagpole up, running a flag up in front of Town Hall. I'm sorry, it just, it doesn't make sense to me.
John, I don't know that I'd find this conversation trivial or insulting. I think it's important. People have made these requests, these are serious requests, and I think, I don't think this issue is trivial. For some, it's very important.
There's no aspect of what I just said that suggests that this is a trivial discussion. What I'm saying is that what's flying in front of Town Hall versus the municipal support across a town of 21,000 people with all their residents and businesses, that is a sea of support demonstrated by significant numbers of people as opposed to a single flag.
It certainly is. And to have the support of the town also is very important. When I look at state and national buildings that have the pride flag up, I see that as government supporting it, so I don't see an issue with the town of Darien.
By the way, I don't want to minimize your point. The fact that we're having this discussion, this is a controversial point, right? There are people, there are people of good faith and reasonable points of view on all sides of this. If this were something easy, we would have decided this a long time ago, but it's not, right? Your position is strongly held and perfectly reasonable, and there are lots of folks, I would hope my position is considered also reasonable, and we're just going to have to come to a point of view. And ultimately, there's got to be a decision on that, and it's going to be binary. So I just wanted to say I respect your point and your position.
No, I, yeah.
You know, with regard to the amount of time that could potentially be spent on enacting and administering a flag policy, you know, I would say that this option, the three flags, is always there. If all of a sudden, this becomes an unduly expensive or burdensome enterprise, you know, you could change this in, you know, in a heartbeat. But if we do this today, we are eliminating opportunities to show support. And I agree with John, it's very powerful and moving to go and drive through town and see numerous, you know, pride flags. But, you know, we're a government, and we need to stand for something sometimes. And sometimes that means standing up when a particular group is being bullied or ignored. And maybe that's POWs who were forgotten in Vietnam, or maybe that's people of the LGBTQ community, you know, who were murdered over the last few days. Maybe it's Ukrainians who have done nothing but lived peaceful, democratic lives, who are invaded. And then we, as a government, well, you know, we can't really say anything about it, but, you know, we'll, you know, we'll come and clap and, you know, maybe we'll put up, you know, flags on our yards. But we're a government, and we should stand for something now and then, if only because I think that's why this country was formed.
Yeah, I guess my only point in response to that is that we can't allow ourselves to say that flying a flag in front of Town Hall is the only or the best way to do that, right? I look at Monica's presence at some of these events, or the number of people that turned out in front of Town Hall to support the Ukrainian community, or I'm sure there are dozens of other times and venues and places where municipal support has been demonstrated effectively in front of not just crowds of people, but crowds of people who are very moved and motivated by that particular subject or that particular topic or issue. I think that's where we could be most effective as a board, right? Simply approving a flag to be flown and forgetting about the rest of this. I would turn it around and say, actually, our highest and best use is to go out and actively engage with those members of the community that take those things seriously and celebrate with them arm-in-arm.
Is there a reason we can't do both?
Well, I get back to the second reason that I made this, my points, which is the first one that we're just discussing. The second one is I don't think it's a trivial exercise to sort through all of these requests. It takes up a significant amount of time. It has taken up a significant amount of time to this point, right? We've consumed a lot of airtime just in this meeting trying to debate what is a very controversial topic. I think the best thing to do is to adopt this policy, and by the way, you said before, there's no reason we couldn't adopt an open policy and revert or change if we had to. There's also no reason we couldn't adopt this and to see how it goes. One of the things that I think validate this is that this is not something we're chiseling in stone that can never be changed. I think this is an important policy for us to adopt now and see how it goes.
But what that argument doesn't take into an account is, is that this is the status quo, and you can always go back to it, but the time, the necessity, the requests are here now. And so it's not, you know, to the people who wish to fly these flags, they're, what are they going to say? Oh, well, you know what? Maybe in three years, they'll feel differently? You know, it'd be harder to remove this policy than it would be to put it back if all of a sudden it was unduly burdensome, which would be quantifiable in so many respects. You know, Kate could come and say, we had to hire three people to consider these applications. Now we're going to buy flag poles, all of that, which I'm sure wouldn't be the case. But then that would be the case to revert to a policy like this. The case to put in the policy that Council recommends, although he's not recommending per se, one, you know, a ban versus a non-ban, those issues are here now. Those issues, John, that you raise are prospective and maybe will occur, maybe will not.
Well, I disagree. I think that the amount of time we've spent on this, the number of flag requests that have come in demonstrates that this is actually something that takes up a lot of time right now, right? And in fact, this policy will require the least amount of work going forward, because once it's put in place, then we're not considering flags, and everybody knows that. But I wouldn't look at that as a negative. I would actually look at that as to say, okay, well, this particular avenue, because of the administration that we've discussed in this meeting, this is not going to work. There are hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of other ways that support for a particular issue or topic or cause can be demonstrated in this town. It is not just flying a flag on a single flagpole or a flagpole at the beach. There are so many other things that could be done. Why wouldn't we then turn around and go from this and not say, oh, my God, this is a negative thing, and we can never actually support this cause in town? Why don't we turn this around right after this and say, okay, we're not going to fly these flags, only the three official flags. Let's make a list of all the community events that are coming up where there's cause for celebration or common cause that needs to be made with people, to your point, who are suffering or under pressure or maybe being abused, or, to your point, killed, right? What could we do as a board to get up from this table and walk out and support those people, right, at an event in front of a camera or walking with them to try and fight the discrimination that they're facing? I think that's much, much better and actually sends a more unique and powerful message than merely flying a flag.
Right, but that's not what's on the table right now. The table, conversation right now is regarding flags. It's not about which is a better thing to do. It's not about, there's no value in going and joining and holding and linking arms with those folks. There's no conversation. This is simply about the flags, and I think that this is something that this town can do to show support. I think these policies that have been put in place by South Windsor and Bloomfield are ones that we could easily use. I think that if an organization or a group really wants to have a flag flown, they could easily create a process that says, you have to apply 60 days ahead, you have to come and defend that request to the Board of Selectmen in an open meeting, and then this board could make the decision.
And also, though, the, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So, my concern and I, you know, I, obviously, this has been at top of mind for every one of us in the last six months. I am a huge supporter of the pride movement in town. I have proudly wore my own pride T-shirt and proudly hung my pride flags on my front yard, which is on a main road here in town for everyone to view. I also have a family that is part of a marginalized community in this town. My husband is African-American and I'm raising three biracial children in town. So, I, I understand how important the voice is to be heard as, as, as a marginalized person in our community. However, when I look at this list, I think sitting up here and voting on any one of these could put us in a position where we have marginalized people that have requested these flags where that is not at our intent, just because of our own political ideology. And I personally am not comfortable making that choice to have that voice flown on a government poll in front of Town Hall. You know, there are, there are a list on there of things that I would very easily vote no and there is a list of things on there that I would very easily vote yes. Would I be hurting someone? Would I be marginalizing someone because of that vote? I don't think that's my job as a selectman to do that. My job as a selectman is to be the voice, going out there, supporting it in community events, but flying a flag, I, I just, I don't think that that's our choice.
What is political? Which, what are those flags are political?
There's a pro-choice flag on there that's pretty political.
So, it's certainly within our purview to say that it's too political or right to life is too political and we're not flying that flag. Come and sue us. Here's the address. I'll be in court at 9:30. I mean, it's, it's not, and the other things to go and say, well, we'll go out to community events, well, then we're waiting for community events to occur and so we can go and we can support them. These are things that we can do. And is it difficult? Yes. But sometimes it's necessary to do the difficult things, to make difficult choices. We're an intelligent group, as Sarah pointed out, where we spent months convincing the community that we're competent enough to purchase and run $103 million island. So, we can do that and, but we can't, we can't figure out to say yes to a pride flag and no to St. Patrick's Day flag or however it, however it comes out. And I don't want it to sound like, well, you know, I wore the pride flag or this flag or any flag. I just think that it's, you know what, that it's the responsibility of government to speak now and then and this is an opportunity to do it. And if there are, you know, if there are people that are hurt, that, we do that all the time. We make budget choices that, we will be doing that next month. We'll be making budget choices that will affect individuals. We make choices to litigate or not litigate against entities that cause damage to our citizens. So, politics is about choices and this is about a choice, whether or not we're going to do something active and use our intellectual capabilities or we're going to take the easy choice and just say, these three flags, that's it.
Mike, I don't think this is the easy choice and I'm not happy with you continuing to say that.
I don't agree this is easy at all.
Everyone here is thinking about this very carefully. Nobody is punting this. We are having a very active discussion on this. So, I don't think this, I don't think if we choose to go this way that this, that's taking the easy way out, okay? I personally think that, that the Darien flag, the Connecticut flag and the American flag cover everybody in our community. Every single person is represented underneath those flags, all right? You might think that this isn't an onerous list. How about this? Adopt a senior pet. That sounds like a great idea.
No. Five seconds.
Why?
Why? Because it's trivial and I love dogs and I love pets and I love old people.
But Mike, I can guarantee you that there will be at least 10 people out there, there's at least one, that will think that that's a great idea.
And they could vote me out.
And I can tell you that there'll be somebody out there that will think that adopting a senior pet is, that is terrible. You know why? Because you are saving an old pet's life when you could be saving this kitten's life who has its whole life ahead of us. The reason I'm pointing this out is because that will be the type of discussion that we will be having and I don't think that's the proper role of government, okay? I think the proper role of government is we support the U.S., the Connecticut, and the Darien flag on our polls, all right? But we do more than that with our feet and that is that we go to these events and we show up and we actually mean it and we support them, whether it's the menorah lighting or it's the pride or it's, it's the Veterans Day. That's where we really make, make a difference as people, all right? So, this isn't, I don't think of this as, you know, punting. I don't think of this as, you know, taking the easy way out. I am firmly in favor of everybody doing what they want to do in their own lives and I hope, I sincerely hope that people will continue to come out at these events with their feet. But I am a, I personally am in favor of flying the three flags.
Well, that's it then.
Well, that's my opinion, so. Any other comments? No? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the town of Darien policy of display of flags that we Marcy moves. John seconds. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on the approved land acquisition. So, Kate, do you have any comments on this?
I updated the draft policy with the comments from, that have been provided prior to the last meeting and at the last meeting, so that is what you have in front of you.
Could you just highlight the changes that you, what have we discussed?
Sure. So, both you and the first selectman have provided some changes, a lot of formatting changes and some grammar changes. The one that was proposed at the last meeting, in the very first, in the second paragraph on the first page, we changed the wording to say, when opportunities for the town of Darien to acquire land arise, they shall be presented to the Board of Selectmen.
Right. Okay.
Any other comments? No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the land acquisition policy? John moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Okay. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of November 7th. It was a regular meeting. Any additions, deletions, corrections?
No, for good reason.
Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, that's it for minutes. Okay, agenda review. Any topics board members would like to see on future agenda?
None.
No?
Yep.
Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? John moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.